Good morning, everyone. Zara Hussain, councillor Forande.
Good morning. Constance Shoffley from Beeston and Holbeck.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Annie Maloney, also from Beeston and Holbeck.
Morning, councillor Luke Cunningham of Marmley Ward.
Morning, councillor Simon Siri from the Putsey Ward.
Good morning, councillor Barry Anderson, Adlin Warfield Ward.
And now we'll pass to Becky to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Becky Atherton, scrutiny adviser to the board.
Thank you very much, and a warm welcome to our substitutes today. It's always stimulating to get a fresh perspective on the areas that we're looking at today. And I will now go into the agenda before we introduce our guests as their items arise. So, Becky, item one.
There are no appeals today, Chair.
Item two.
There are no late items. Oh, sorry, Becky, pardon. There are no items excluded from the public domain.
Do we have any late items at item three?
We don't have any late items, no.
Item four, any declarations of interest from panel members? Okay. Item five, apologies.
We have apologies from two board members today. We have councillor Norma Harrington and councillor Siri substituting, and councillor Mohammed Ikbal and councillor Ray substituting. In addition, we've had apologies from both James Rogers and councillor Mohamed Rafiq.
I also understand that Astrid Blofeld from the first item won't be joining us in person, unfortunately, but they will be observing online. Oh, you are there. I beg your pardon. You're more than welcome. Right, that's good. So, on to the minutes, item six. Are we happy with the minutes as they are published? Any matters arising? Okay, thank you very much. On to item seven, which is our first item of business. This is our item on tackling hate crime. This is in response to interest raised by the board that they wanted to have a much more informed and granular discussion at the issue which is, of course, causing significant concern in several communities in the city at the moment. And I'd just like to invite the officers and members who are going to help us discuss this item to introduce themselves first of all.
Good morning, everybody. I'm councillor Mary Harland, representing Kipakston Metley and exec board member for Communities, Customer Service and Community Safety.
Morning, everybody. I'm Paul Money. I'm the chief officer in the council with responsibility for safer, stronger communities. As part of that, I have responsibility for the community safety agenda, and this is a component part of that.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Geoff Turnbull. I'm the council's equality, diversity and inclusion manager, and the council's responsibilities under hate crime sit within my equality, diversity, inclusion and hate crime team. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, everybody. My name is Sergeant Jonathan McNeice, Chief Inspector Partnership, West Yorkshire Police, and representing the police and part of the Safe for Leeds Partners.
Good morning. I'm Sergeant Marion Hussain. I'm the community cohesion sergeant for Leeds and the hate crime sergeant.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nina Panu. I'm new at Leeds Council in the safer and stronger team, policy and performance officer for equalities and hate crime.
Good morning, everyone. Astrid Blofeld, hate crime officer for the equality and hate crime team.
Thank you very much. One thing I will say in particular to those people who have identified themselves as new to the organisation, I was told by somebody who'd been to scrutiny board very recently that they were petrified when they were sat answering questions of councillors. I just want to point out, this is a very inclusive forum, and we're all interested in getting the best possible outcomes for the people of Leeds. So, don't feel the interest is less than positive. Now then, I would invite councillor Harland to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chair. You stole my thunder a little bit there. I was going to say that it was Nina and Astrid's first time out, so please be gentle with them. But I know that you'll show them the utmost respect and interest in what they've got to say. So this report is the update and shows how we are tackling hate crime across the city. We work very, very closely with many partners, the police, and of course, third sector organisations as well. There's many people here that have made great progress in what we've done, but we know with recent tensions that things have escalated somewhat. So, happy for the officers now to take the questions. I think Paul wants to do it now.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Chair, we do have, if it's helpful, a very short presentation that I think we're ready and able to present on the IT here, which provides some place-based and some thematic oversight of hate crime. It's not meant to be inclusive of everything because it's such a broad area, but in terms of some of the place-based information, you might find that helpful. And in addition, we are seeing an increase, as you will have picked up no doubt in the data, around race and faith, and so a little bit more of a deeper dive, if you will, into that particular strand, if you'd find that helpful before questions.
Yes, please. A short presentation is always welcome, especially if it's pithily presented. For those few observing from home, we are currently releasing the blinds so that the sun is not shining in the eyes of our principal presenter.
So, in addition to the appendix, in which, I don't know, we've a few slides primarily advise members of data. So, we just want to very quickly. And then. In the future. So. So, the cam- medical data, areas of the. Members and other. Places in. Good. Play it in a variety of ways with lots of facts which. Eight sections of trouble which. And then, oh, ha- data. Data in that way, and. And abuse data against different. That was being a area that. That to character. So, giving you a couple of examples. Things are safe because that is the. Rising at the. That's really just. That's to develop. Basis. The art, develop that over. Base sectors that hate.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So. Benefit. But we can always refer back to them if people wish to during the meeting, I think. Just making sure that technically we're able to do that. Because they do raise particular questions. In terms of the religious hate crimes that you were talking about earlier, it is very significant that certain parts of the city are more affected by that than others. And, of course, members are involved in community committees where they have the full multi-agency representation there, and this information will be very useful for more in-depth discussions to be taken on a locality basis perhaps there too. But we do appreciate it. In terms of the place-based, in terms of the environment within which race hate crimes or incidents take place, I'm glad that you referenced that because it was something that we had concern the last time this was discussed at scrutiny board. And I do note that in the report, you do already indicate that you think certain areas are more apparent for race hate occurrence, because you mention the night-time economy, and I'm trying to think what the second one was. But perhaps you can offer some more detail on that in terms of how you come to that conclusion. Is it because you actually have a dataset behind it, or that it is more about anecdotal intelligence from policing teams themselves? So, over to our board members for questioning. Who'd like to go first? Councillor Hague? Sorry? Oh, sorry. We'll go with councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you. So, just following on from councillor Galton's comments about the breakdown of areas, I just wondered how much information we have on the demographics of those people responsible for the crimes. So, in terms of age, in terms of gender, just thinking again about how we focus our resources in our local community committees.
Good morning. Yes, I can perhaps help with that. So, from a police perspective, yeah, we very much do. Any offender that we've got, all the suspects, whether named suspects, we have that breakdown in terms of their age, ethnicity, home address, whether local to Leeds, et cetera, et cetera. I suppose it's worth us referencing, though, that there are a number of cases, unfortunately, where it's that transient contact between someone that's been victimised and an offender, where that offender's then not identified. And so in those cases, we wouldn't have that information available.
I guess I was maybe wondering more in terms of general, maybe, age definition, because I know you mentioned schools as well, so I just wondered what the division is maybe between there being instances of the offenders being, you know, young people as well. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So, in terms of sort of the outright statistics as we have them, I do think it's very varied. There are those instances that take place in schools. It's not an outlier in terms of offenders. It tends to be more the older population, if I'm honest, those that are in the sort of mid-20s. Another gap perhaps where you get into the 40s and slightly older that are responsible for where those offenders are identified. There's nothing that I've seen through our safe schools offices that you'll appreciate are embedded across the city to suggest that, for example, that there's a rise that's occurring within schools.
Thank you. Councillor Hannan?
Thank you very much, Chair. Two points. The first point is, I think there's a feeling of people not wanting to report hate, and they feel that nothing gets done, which is understandable. What measures or what are you doing about that to get the message out to people in communities, especially the affected ones, that we need this reported so that we can act on it? If you can give me a bit of an update on that. And I might have missed it, but if you can give me what your convictions rate on hate, it could be raw data or something that is available so that we know that if people ask us, we can say the police and the council have got these convictions rate that are probably working or not working in terms of dealing with the issue. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. So, in terms of detections, although I can't provide you with direct figures at the moment, because you'll imagine, you can appreciate, the strands are so wide as has already been referenced. What I will say is, hopefully, a reassurance to the board that the outcomes that we've got are no lower than the half of other crimes, albeit, as a reference already, they're often transient contacts, you know, comments, other things that occur, unless continued contact between victim and the offender. Satisfaction rates are actually generally higher for race hate crimes specifically, and actually, we're an outlier as well in terms of our similar districts within West Yorkshire. So, hopefully, that gives some reassurance on that as well. In terms of some of the support from policing perspective, it might be worth me just referencing some of that with my colleague if I can. She operates at that frontline, engaging with victims directly, can give you real insight into some of our activities there.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. So, in relation to under-reporting, we know there's a massive issue. We can't deny that. There's loads of barriers why people don't report. So, for instance, language, the fact that the trust and confidence within policing is low. So, in relation to that, me and my team, so it's split within hate crime coordinators and strategic engagement officers, and what we try and do is a bit of wraparound care around victims of hate crime. So, for instance, my faith officer, she's dedicated within Leeds, and there's over like 3,000 faith establishments, and she goes around into different areas of temples, mosques, and she delivers inputs around hate crime, how to report it, the fact that we do care and we're here to listen and provide that wraparound service in relation to that. Also, a bit of work that I do, being a Muslim myself, I've attended different establishments, especially mosques. This was all in relation to, obviously, what happened around in the summer, to give them a bit more, when it was Jumma prayer, Friday prayer, because that's when potentially there were more people at the mosques, and did a bit of an input around hate crime, the fact that we are here, and just all around, you know, in relation to understanding the barriers. So, for instance, language is a big thing. West Yorkshire Police, the current website, there's over 100-plus languages. If you just go onto the filters, also, we can provide interpreters, which, when I came into this role, I didn't realise people didn't know that. So, there's a bit of work to do around that. We do all sorts, really. We can do scrutiny panels, so where members of the public can sign up, and we go through a hate crime, the start and finish of it. So, the initial investigation, what officers did, and also the victim code, and the victim's perception around hate crime, and what happened at the end, and the learning that's taken from the panel members goes back within the police. And I do a direct debrief with that officer involved. So, I'll give you a quick example. Sorry, I do go on. So, for instance, the last hate crime that I did, basically, my panel members, who potentially are all victims of hate crime and have lived, real lived experiences, they talked about the fact that the officer didn't, when the initial crime, when he wrote the crime, he didn't, he called it racial slurs, he didn't actually specifically say what the crime was, and it was the P-word. I fed that back to the officer. So, it's about doing that direct, like, learning and understanding, and the officer actually understood why it's really important to actually say this was the crime. Because for a victim of hate crime, that's very important to say this is exactly what's happened to me. So, we do stuff like that. I'll stop now.
Thank you. Paul wanted to come in, didn't he?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I just think in terms of the two questions that have been asked, if I could just maybe go back to, the report details five priorities within the hate crime strategy. The two that I think are most relevant in terms of the questions that have just been asked, if I'm not misunderstanding them, one is around what we're doing around prevention, and actually influencing the young people in the city is absolutely critical in terms of changing behaviours. So, there's a lot of work going on within educational establishments, maybe to talk more specifically to your point, councillor Cunningham, because we know that, we know that, and councillor Galton referenced it at the beginning, we know we're seeing things playing out in our communities now with less tolerance. We've got some interesting things happening with our datasets around hate crime, but we know that the operational context in which we're working is there's less tolerance and there are significant issues. So, there's a real focus strand of work on young people across the city, both in terms of those that are exhibiting this type of behaviour, to work with them, to bring that kind of behaviour to a close, but also to influence young people across the city in terms of what it means to be a responsible person in this city and to not get involved in this type of activity. We know that there's a real challenge linked to that with under-reporting. Hate crime's not unique. We see it in other areas, such as domestic violence, for instance, but we absolutely know that with the best will in the world, there are a lot of communities out there who maybe wouldn't have that much confidence in me working for the local authority, or John O'Mareen working for West Yorkshire Police. So, we work with third sector organisations and others that have traction in communities to address specifically the under-reporting concerns. We have invested quite significantly in hate reporting centres and signposting centres, with a view to being able to encourage people who might not want to walk into a police station, for instance, to report such an incident, to at least have some confidence to report it to somebody. And through that network, we can then seek to do more about building trust and confidence. I think the other thing that I'd reference is, and it comes back to the point that was loosely touched on there around scrutiny, our own scrutiny arrangements, we have to deal with hate crime incidents comprehensively, because that's how we'll give people confidence that if they do talk to us about what they're experiencing, they'll get a professional, joined-up response. And the scrutiny processes around identifying where that maybe doesn't happen as we would like. So, hopefully, that pulls together a couple of the key threads there.
Thanks, Paul. Before I bring councillor Hannan in again, can you perhaps go into some of that detail you talked about in terms of the reporting? And I'll refer to pages 27 to 29 in the report, where there are several tables which talk about reported hate crime incidents and the percentage increase. And you've just mentioned that you work with third sector organisations to help with that reporting. And the Stop Hate UK table, which is 14.7, reports increases that are in the hundreds of per cent. So, race is up 165 per cent, religion 204 per cent, sexual orientation 400 per cent, which doesn't quite correlate with the increases that are mentioned in other parts of the tables. But it does answer some of the questions for councillor Cunningham in terms of the area that Stop Hate UK are focusing on, which I think is the youth area. So, could you give us a little bit more information on that data, if that's okay?
Yeah. In terms of that data, in the paragraph after that table, you'll find that we've referenced the reason why that data's seen such a huge increase, because a year ago, we commissioned Stop Hate UK to take on the schools' reporting system. So, they are now adding into their data all of the schools' reports. So, that's why there's such a big increase in terms of their high-level data. So, prior to that, they weren't doing the schools' reporting. So, all the schools' figures are now included in their area. We're obviously at the end of that first year, so moving forward, we're going to be able to provide comparative data in terms of the work that they're doing in schools. In terms of Stop Hate UK, and in terms of the council's responsibilities under hate crime, so fundamentally, the council's responsibilities are that we have to provide third-party reporting, because it's a recognition of the fact that some communities have historical challenges in terms of working with the police and other elements of the criminal justice system. So, the first and main way that we address that is through our contract with Stop Hate UK, who are a Leeds-based charity. They used to be Leeds Racial Harassment Project. They were actually founded originally by the Equality Team a couple of decades ago. We're very proud of the fact they've become a national charity and are providing services to local authorities all around the country now. So, they provide online reporting functionality and a telephone helpline, and that's 24-hour telephone helpline. So, that's kind of a bit of a high-level tick, if you like, in terms of meeting our statutory responsibilities. But then, in addition to that, you'll see in the report a variety of other mechanisms, one of which is the system that we have for our schools. And, like I say, Stop Hate UK took that on 12 months ago. So, that's a piece of development work in terms of trying to get schools to sign up to that in a really fragmented education sector, where we don't manage all of the schools anymore. And one of the other pieces of work we're trying to do as part of kind of get schools to sign up is, if you're not working with us, who are you working with? How are you taking your responsibilities around this area seriously? Because they may be choosing in academies and free schools, et cetera, to do things differently. So, that's a bit of a gap at the moment in terms of our intelligence and data that we're working on. The other kind of point I just wanted to make in terms of that increasing confidence in the system, obviously, we work closely with all partners, but we have got partners like Yorkshire Medmark in terms of engaging with the LGBT community, United Response, a disability charity, in terms of our third-party reporting centres, in terms of engaging with the universities through the student unions, where there are places that students will talk to and report. And we obviously are seeking to develop in a targeted way those third-party reporting centres, looking at the data, thinking about where in the city perhaps we need to have more third-party reporting, and then by sector. So, faith is an area, faith establishments is an area, that we want to have some more third-party reporting centres in. So, there's a lot going on in terms of that development. And obviously, Astrid as our first-ever hate crime officer for the local authority. One of Astrid's big roles is community engagement. So, she was out yesterday with the police's faith engagement, talking to various faith establishments.
Thanks, Jeff. That was really helpful. Councillor Hannan?
Thank you very much, Chair. A comment and a suggestion, if possible. I think, Paul, you made a very good point, is who do you actually report it to? And when I used to do community work about 20, 25 years ago, we used to have a community police officer that would go around the wards and come and speak to us. Would it be possible to look at if we can have bilingual officers in these areas that are really highly affected, so that the language barriers could be challenged, and they can build that confidence to report it? Because if they see a police officer, I think the hopes of reporting it is high because they will see it as a crime, rather than going to a centre and reporting to potentially a community worker or a centre manager. Whereas if it's a community officer that's got bilingual languages, I think you might be able to get that unreported going up high. Can that be looked into, please? Yes, I'll answer that. I'm sure the board are well aware of the investment of West Yorkshire Police in terms of neighbourhood policing, so I can give you that reassurance about our neighbourhood policing teams that we have, the PCSOs that we've got, and the number of officers that are coming in that are in fact bilingual. You're right, actually, that is something that we could develop further. If I can just reference some of the local picture that we've had just through, you know, from July onwards, we've got Roma-speaking officers, we've got an officer that's embedded in catch at Hovingham Avenue that you'll perhaps be aware of, and we've got Roma-speaking officers that were just being referenced over the last couple of days, that are engaging with communities and going through some of the things that Marine had already discussed around what can expect from the police after report crimes, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think we're making the first steps in that. It's not something that we're blind to, but yes, certainly, probably somewhere to go still.
Thank you. Councillor Hague?
Thank you, Chair. Following on councillor Hannan's points really.
Thank you Chair. Following on councillor Hanon's points really. We had an event earlier this week, we were talking about, it was about anti-Muslim prejudice, but I think it's a wide point. And one of the things the presenter was saying was that people report perhaps the first or second incidents where they experience a hate crime, but perhaps after that they've become a bit fatigued by it. I mean, we experience this across all kinds of reporting issues. So how do we build that? How do we reassure people that they should continue to report because it will have an impact? I mean, we know that, you know, the more things are reported, the more that you can focus resources on that. But how do we, what work are we doing to do that? I have a follow-up question, a different subject, please Jeff.
I think I'll answer that. So basically, we have mechanisms within West Yorkshire Police that when someone who is a repeat victim of a hate crime, it flags up on our system. So it would come to my team and they would be treated as a high priority compared to possibly other victims of hate crime purely because of the history. So what we do is we put flags in place. So it'd be a repeated hate crime victim and basically my hate crime coordinators would do some wraparound care. So it would be either home visits, phone calls, but we are victim-led, so we are very careful in how we have that engagement with the victim because, speaking from experience and like councillor said about bilingual and culture and barriers, you know, we have to be very mindful in how we approach because it's so sensitive, do you know what I mean? It's just, so we are very conscious of that. So it could be a letter, but it basically explains what a hate crime coordinator's role is and what their role is is to give them that wraparound care. So it'd be signposting to victim support or specific agencies that help them. So for instance, TransLeads, Tell Mama, different charities, as well as giving them a police perspective so we can get involved with multi-agencies like the Crime Prevention Officer, antisocial behaviour officers. And again, not just looking at that victim, but what other partnerships can we bring forward to help this victim? So that's kind of the work that my hate crime coordinators do. Thank you.
And your second question?
Yeah, my second question relates to the fact that often hate crime is linked to or perpetrated on social media. So those communities, we're all in those groups. So how is that reported? What can we do as a community and as councillors when we start to feel that those those comments are going in a direction they really shouldn't?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And we've seen that again referencing through the summer, you know, that proliferation, as you rightly say. There are some difficulties and challenges around it. A lot of this service, for example, where this is being perpetuated abroad, where beyond the reach of us and our court authorities to be able to access them. Not all states, not all countries worldwide have the same focus and support in terms of tackling these offences. But I think actually the flip side though, that we did see through the latter end of the summer was where we're able to have people identified early, arrested early. There was support and direction from the CPS, which with respect to hadn't been previously in terms of what their evidential requirements were, what they needed from us to prove the case. Where then expediting those investigations to, you know, to get them to court and resolved in that initial phase. So that's some of the work that's been done. Sustaining that is problematic, as I say, because we don't have the support worldwide of all other agencies and other countries. But you can see through the investment that we've got collectively, both to West Yorkshire Police and company we serve for Leeds, that actually we're doing everything that we possibly can. Where we see this change in offender behaviour, we'll mirror our response to tackle it as well.
Can I, I'll bring you in in a second Jeff. Can we ask some clarity there? There was some controversy recently about a journalist that was seen by a couple of officers at her home. And it was referenced by one of our local councillors at a community committee recently in terms of concern that police resource is being drawn away from one area to focus on a different area. Can you clarify that actually that kind of activity is usually delivered by specialist hate crime teams or not?
Yes, it is. So I'm not sure whether the circumstances it referring to are in Leeds. If not, then you'll appreciate my knowledge on the specifics of that are limited. But in terms of what takes place in Leeds, I can hopefully reassure you that yes, our neighbourhood officers are specialists in that area of offending. We record our crimes, both hate crimes and hate incidents, in accordance with Home Office guidelines. And then we'll undertake from there proportionate victim-led approach. There are crimes that have got that attendant hate behaviour that's as an aggravating factor. But then there are other incidents that may equally be racially aggravated, motivated by any strand of hate crime that actually aren't specifically a crime in themselves. What we're trying to do collectively is, please, in company we serve for Leeds, effectively is to have that cohesion across our communities. So we will intervene in a proportionate manner. Our actions that we take will be to that end, to achieve cohesion. I hope that goes somewhere to reassure you and explain what our response would be.
Jeff, did you still want to come in?
Yeah, it was really just to focus back on the social media side of things. I mean, the irony is, we do have some still-developing social media presence around the hate crime agenda and we have to be extremely cautious about how we use it in terms of locking it down because unfortunately it attracts considerable amount of hate. And that is, you know, one of the things you have to accept when you're talking about hate is that it will it will bring people out in terms of putting more hate on. We did have a discussion at that really excellent session with members on Monday around, you know, how many of us actually report stuff we see on social media? How many of us click on that little button in order to take that responsibility ourselves when we see hateful content? I do. It's, you know, something that kind of, I suppose, comes with the job, the responsibility to take a lead on it. I think I probably have a success rate of about one in 20. I understand the real frustration of people when you get that standard response back saying unfortunately, you know, this pretty awful stuff that's been said isn't within our criteria. Tell Mama advised, their response rate as an organisation is about 10% they get. And we discussed the fact it's still really important to keep going because it's better to have one thing removed, you know, even if nine slip by. In terms of how we combat that in a wider sphere, I think it's really important we don't fall into the trap of making the assumption that younger people are somehow much more inclusive and that is entirely a generational issue. We are seeing a rise in misogyny, which isn't an official hate crime category at national level, but we are including it in our work. We're seeing, and you will have seen much press about this, misogyny being an area where young people, there are worrying rises in that area. When talking to our friends in CST, the Jewish community, their anecdotal evidence and some data evidence is that there are worrying trends in terms of younger people expressing antisemitic language in school settings. So we need to kind of tackle some of that head-on. And we do have, and you'll see in the report, plans for a significant anti-discrimination marketing campaign across the city, which is about challenging the causes of hate. So racism and homophobia and misogyny and antisemitism, et cetera, at root.
Thanks Jeff. Councillor Farley?
Thanks Chair. I'm going to follow councillor Hague's lead and I've got two separate questions. But I'll just start with a quick comment following on from just in praise of the reporting hubs. I'm a trustee at Leeds Refugee Forum and that is a reporting hub. And I think that having that sort of safe space, that sort of, that community environment is really beneficial for reporting this type of crime. As one of the councillors who covers Hairhills in the Birmingham South of Richmond Hill ward, I appreciate, but nonetheless, the obvious experience on the back of what happened in July and the deployment of the Roma-speaking officer in that community is obviously welcome. But I think there's obviously lessons that we all need to learn in terms of, you know, the makeup of that particular community and more generally the communities that we serve. Just with my background in the NHS, one of the things that we quite often talk about is the service reflecting the community it serves. And I think one of the issues that we still have across the police, but, you know, with our MPTs is that they're still very white. It's not necessarily reflective of the communities in which they are working. And, you know, we've got a fantastic MPT, they're doing incredible work, got a lot of, you know, I mean, I spent Monday evening out talking about darker nights and safer streets, which, you know, alongside our local officers. But I suppose the question about what are the police doing to recruit from communities in order to make them then therefore more approachable to those communities?
I can answer in general terms. And then there's a specific case that I think Marine would like to just to discuss if she can. So in terms of, West Yorkshire Police really, again, are an outlier in terms of our the cohesion within our workforce, the number of offices that we've got that are actually black minority ethnic recruits locally, regionally, we're an outlier. Again, as with when we're discussing the bilingual offices, there is more work to be done, but we do try to reflect the communities as far as we're able to do. I think one other thing that I would like to say though on that is, as police, we're very much measured by the actions that we take and what we do, not necessarily by the makeup of the officers. I completely accept that somebody that we need to represent our communities. We are the communities and the communities are us and we're getting better in that regard. And someone, whether it's a Roma community or any other, that sees that reflected in a police officer is more likely to approach them. I absolutely accept that. But what I would also say is that we've got officers in other parts of East Leeds specifically that are working really, really hard with the local communities that don't fit the local demographic, if you like, but actually they're respected by the work that they're doing to protect and to serve that community. So there are definite benefits, but equally where we don't fully reflect the local community, we're still working as hard as we can for them. If I can just, I'll come to my colleague.
Does, West Yorkshire Police have invested in a positive action team? Within this team, it's a makeup of ethnic minorities and other officers, including staff officers because what we realised was that not only we need to talk about police officers, but there's loads of staff roles which are also just as good or beneficial. And without the staff roles, West Yorkshire Police can't run. So there is a lot of recruitment that they do. They go around in different areas, around Leeds, around the universities, Hairhills. I was with them the other day at a cricket club when we try and like recruit people from minority backgrounds, but also at the same time, it's it's that fine line because some of them don't really want to be a police officer. And it's trying to break down those barriers, but again, it goes back to the trust and confidence and seeing someone like me, a minority and a female, you know, I do have an advantage where I can try and like give my, like, experiences in relation to what it's like being a West Yorkshire Police officer as a serving officer, the fact that now I'm a sergeant, going around different mosques and things. So it works both ways really, but at the same time, you know, it's not, it's all about trying to break those barriers, but it is really hard. I would like to say though, the Chief Constable John Robbins is very on board with the DDI strategy in terms of recruiting more minorities. And I believe, I don't know the stats on top of my head, but in terms of the black community especially, for within the Police Race Action Plan, we have had quite a big percentage increase just in relation to that particular minority group. I hope that explains a bit more.
Okay, thank you. Now, my second question. When we were going through the slides on the screen, you know, one of the things that stuck out to me was the consistently higher levels of hate crime in East Leeds. You know, I'm an East Leeds lad, I will, you know, it's the best part of Leeds, you know. But, thank you. But it's quite concerning when those stats are so persistently high. Is there any reason for this? Is there any sort of explanation? Is it just more and better reporting and people feeling more confident and comfortable reporting? That comes back to the point with regards to the reporting hubs. Or is it just a greater level of this sort of crime?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of East Leeds, I'd completely echo what you said. Most of my policing service has been in East Leeds and it was there for a reason and in neighbourhoods as well. So yeah, I'd echo what you're saying and thank you again for your comments earlier about our neighbourhood policing teams. In terms of your specific question, yes, I think it's all of that that you're referencing, to be honest. We know that there's been challenges around reporting of hate crimes generally. And it's difficult to say that whether high levels of hate crime reporting are a good thing or a bad thing. Offending, absolutely a terrible thing to occur for people to have to endure. But actually that people have got that confidence in us to actually tell us where these offences are occurring and to allow us to do something about it and stop it, then that's something that we absolutely want to encourage. A wide number of different ethnicities that are in your part of East Leeds particularly, I know, because that's where I left before I came to Safer Leeds. And I think it's just testament of the number of people there. It is a very, very heavily populated area of Leeds. In terms of some of the specifics, my sense is that not that it's people that are going about their daily business that are being racially abused by others, it tends to be more around the workplace setting probably as much as anything. Security guards at supermarkets, taxi drivers. People where there's an interaction, an authority figure of some point, of some description, unfortunately then particularly racial slurs come to the fore, or other hate crime comes out. And it seems to be in that setting rather than, I'm glad to say, people perhaps within their own homes that have been abused and targeted by others in the neighbourhood.
Okay, thank you. That's quite an interesting, quite an interesting response and not necessarily something that I would have considered. Obviously, you know, people working in these particular roles, especially kind of taxi drivers who are working, you know, generally speaking alone, if they are being subjected to this sort of abuse, is there any more work that can be done in order to ensure that they're not facing this abuse and obviously a better mechanism of reporting? And what work has been done with that cohort?
Yes, Councillor Farley, that is a really, a really good, good, good point. It goes back to something we were alluding to or inferring in the introduction around either place-based focus, more focused place-based activity or sector-based, depending on how you want to look at it. John's point is a really good one. The risk is where you've got that contact. And obviously in East Leeds with the diversity we see in East Leeds, if you look at Hairhills alone and the diversity there, I would argue there's bound to be more issues. The question of course is, what can you do about it? Or what's the elevated response to that? We do think that through the development that we've seen recently with a police uplift in resourcing and with Astrid and Nina and other colleagues, we've obviously struggled from a local authority point of view to manage to do that within the financial envelope. We've done it because of the point you've absolutely identified there. I think it's a real fair challenge to us around, are you doing as much as you can in those particular settings? So there has been quite a lot of work done with our colleagues in taxi licensing, for instance, around safeguarding and support for private hire and the taxi drivers more generally than that. I think the challenge for us is to maintain the focus on that because there is a particular vulnerability there.
vulnerability there, but it also goes back to the work in schools, it goes back to the work in health settings, it goes back to the work that I think we could do in terms of maybe the transport network, where we're seeing staff and members of the public experiencing issues that we're keen to do more on. We've got some additional resource, it's not massive, to be honest, but we think, and we are certainly keen to, work more closely with people working in those sectors, to improve confidence in reporting, to be more responsive to incidents when they occur, and to drive up satisfaction levels for people who are experiencing hate crime. Because that's a real, coming back to the, I think the question councillor Hague was asking about fatigue, about well, why should I bother reporting? What we know is if people get a good experience when they do report, then they're likely to report again in the unfortunate set of circumstances where it reoccurs. But they're also likely to talk to their friends, who might be experiencing issues as well about the experience that they've had. So, sorry about a long-winded answer there, but you really touched on something there that I think we do need to be focusing more on.
Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks Chair. I know we focused a lot on individuals this morning, but I just wondered what work is being done with groups who are coordinating hate crime. So an example from my ward of Armley was that a few months ago, we had a really coordinated spate of graffiti and stickers that were homophobic and transphobic. And when we reported it and escalated it, we discovered that it was also happening in neighbouring wards, so it was a very coordinated attack. So I just wondered if we could have a bit of information on that, please?
Yeah, I think councillor Cunningham, this is an interesting area for us really in terms of the kind of parallel work that we're doing around community cohesion and around tackling extremism. Because you're absolutely right, in certain parts of the city, we are seeing some interesting things being propagated by people who maybe don't have an interest in communities being together, who maybe don't have an interest in our communities being as cohesive as they are. A lot of those organisations are potentially focusing on particular strands of protective characteristics. A lot of this is to do with the far right as well, and their tactical manoeuvring across some of our cities. So for instance, we are seeing far right organisations with pop-ups in district centres. We are seeing stickerin', the likes of which you described there councillor Cunningham. We're also seeing organisations coming purporting to do good for communities by doing food handouts, by doing community cleanups. What I can tell you is, we have a really effective intelligence arrangement, sort of informing what we do. So for instance, in terms of some of that activity, we recently shared a briefing to members, I hope you all got that briefing, around some of the activity of far right organisations, and the aim of which really to encourage elected members as advocates of local communities to report where you see that sort of thing taking place, so that we can respond in whatever the most appropriate way might be. There's obviously different responses to different issues, but we are seeing that playing out quite a bit. All I would also want to say to you is, we are working really closely on developing a social cohesion strategy for the city. It kind of existed, but it definitely needed some further work on it. We're really keen to work with elected members, particularly community safety champions, around how we kind of build up that protective capability around communities. It is absolutely right that council officers, police officers should be as representative of the community that we can, but there's also a role for all of us really in terms of providing that support, particularly to some of our more vulnerable communities, where this happens more than others.
Thank you. Final question from councillor Ali.
Councillor Holland and Paul Murny, thank you very much for your hard work. Just wanted to ask you, what's the procedure to invite you guys outside religion places like a mosque or something, especially after a Friday prayer, so we can educate people? Thank you.
Ask, phone call, email, and we'll do it. We'll always do it, we'll always do it. Actually, where you see opportunities, we're trying to spot those opportunities, but where you see them, we will always do it. We've got colleagues who are particularly focused on community engagement, so we will never not do it.
Thank you very much for your time today, and we look forward to working with you in future to tackling this very serious subject for the city. Thank you for your time. We're now going to move on to our next item of business, which is item eight. This is the Climate Emergency Annual Update. I think it's worth mentioning that the council corporately takes the climate change very seriously, and it's one of its three core pillars for policy. And there are several, what can we call them, committees, groupings of councillors taking a closer insight into how we tackle the climate change. And this scrutiny board scrutinises the team which delivers and responds to climate change for the city. But also there is a second body, which is the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee, which also takes a very keen interest in guiding policy and response from the council. And we do try our very hardest not to duplicate work, and instead to add value to each other's work. And so one of the ways that we do that is, we like to talk to each other. And we have the Chair of the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee with us, which is councillor Katie Dye, you're very welcome. And we have Polly Cook, who is in charge of the section which looks after the climate emergency response. And we're, in your pack you have the report which was taken to the executive board on the 16th of October, which was to look at this work. And I'm sure you've all absorbed the content in it. And we'll have a short introduction, I think, from Polly to introduce the item.
Okay, good morning everyone. I've just pulled together a really short presentation, because when I met with councillor Goldin as part of the Chair's Brief, he asked the question about actually where would we like your support? And so I'm not repeating what's in the present, in the report, because I'm hoping that everyone's read that, but I've just picked on two key areas that I kind of see as some of our key areas of development. And so we just welcome your views on that. So the information I'm going to share is actually beyond what's in the report, if that's okay with everyone. So let me just test my technical skills. Just give me one second. There we go. Right, so just in terms of really general context, we've got the Calm Disclosure Project, where we get an external rating, and we're currently on an A, we're waiting for this year's rating, so we're obviously keen that that stays at an A. But what they do is they assess where we sit alongside international and other national cities, in terms of both our climate mitigation and our climate adaptation. And the really important thing about it is not so much the grade, but actually they give us feedback on areas for development and what we could look at. And it also allows us access to others, so that we can see what else we can do. So that is all I'm going to say in terms of general context. So the two areas that I'd agreed with councillor Goldin that we'd sort of look at was about the role of green skills and jobs, and about comms and engagement. And so West Yorkshire Combined Authority have got lots of, a lot of focus around that, and employment and skills is one of those areas that kind of sits between both us and the combined authority. And I think there's often a question about what does it even mean when you talk about a green skill or job? And there's a definition of what it means, but yeah, I always say it as anything that gets us on the bound to get to an ultimate. There's some figures there about actually currently are in, they're actually. Right, so I think in 2023, the Climate Change Committee said that actually the new UK forests that have been committed to at a national level would create an additional 40,000 jobs. And at the moment, there's 24,000 people currently employed in core forestry roles. Obviously, within the service that I manage, we actually have a forestry team, and we are having quite a lot of challenges around that in terms of how we find the right people and actually how we train them. So what I've just reflected there is, because there's been a decreasing interest from younger generations in terms of going into some of that outdoor work and skills, that actually that's resulted in some of the colleges stopping offering some of the courses. So it's a bit of a vicious circle, because then when we are trying to sort of find ways to bring people in, it's really difficult to actually find local ways of training people. So we have people currently on different versions of apprentices, who are travelling as far as Cannock Chase or Preston on weekly blocks, in order to be able to facilitate that, because there isn't anybody in the local vicinity. The government has recognised this as an issue, and via the Forestry Commission, they have released some national blocks of training. However, the application for doing that was really short, and actually even with that, our nearest provider was Home First. So for us, that is an area of challenge, and it's something we're looking at now. It's an area where we've got an aging workforce, not very demographically diverse, and actually how do we bring new and different people in? Then just in terms of LBS, it's another area where obviously, again, we're looking at maintaining really different buildings. So we've just asked LBS to kind of reflect on some of the things they're doing in terms of upskilling, so looking at things like solar PV training, looking at battery storage, EV charging design, looking at things like air source heat pumps in the refrigerants and things that go alongside that. So they are starting to work through a process of training and upskilling people, and also they've completed their registration to become an MCS-approved installer for solar PV and battery storage. That again is starting to get our own workforce ready for where we need to be. Really quickly in terms of comms, we do lots of engagement across lots of the different big anchor institutes, and climate action leads is more looking at kind of the community action. So there's lots of different organisations, and we've always said from day one, actually we can't get to net zero as a city without engaging others. So that is absolutely fundamental to the work that we do. But also, we need to actually bring people along with us, and so that communication engagement is really critical, because people need to understand the reasons why sometimes difficult decisions are taken. We focus really heavily on co-benefits, so, you know, not always talking about the climate benefits, but talking about the financial benefits of some of the things, so things like retrofitting homes, you know, the fact that your home feels warmer, more comfortable, that your fuel bills are lower, often gets us over the threshold much easier than talking about climate, and ultimately it gets us to the same point, so why make it more difficult? We do a number of different press releases related to different projects and things that are happening over the year. We also do a monthly newsletter that goes out to just under 7,000 people, as well as attending sort of various meetings and activities across the city. We have two different websites, Clean Air Leeds and Leeds by Example, and I think over the following year, it's about how we kind of reactivate those a bit. They were really prominent back in probably 2019, when we first did the climate conversation. And I think there's a bit of work to bring those back to the forefront again. And one of, so this is more looking forward, one of the things that we're looking at is in terms of some of our visitor attractions, and I've named the ones that I have direct responsibility there, so things like Lotherton, Tropical World, Arium, Temple Newsom. Actually, how do we use our visitor attractions going forward to do climate education, climate engagement? And so looking at really practical things, so like in the cafes and things that we operate, offering things like carbon labelling, explaining the differences between foods, never telling anyone what they should do, but providing people with information to make informed decisions, which I think is the way and the sort of feedback that we've received through consultation that people prefer. Looking at things like conservation work, so Tropical World, there's been a big focus on butterfly conservation that runs through the whole estate, and looking at how you engage the public and engage third sector organisations to work alongside us at Lotherton. Looking to build in some really direct climate education material, working alongside our district heating provider, to help us sponsor an animal enclosure, link it back to animal conservation, link it back to what we're doing in Leeds, and use it to illustrate the district heating network. And then one of the sort of feedback from a recent visit to exec board on district heating was about how do we make sure everybody in the city knows about district heating? We've had probably the most press coverage of anything for district heating, but yet I still go into many a room and talk about it, and everyone goes, oh, that's amazing, I didn't know. So one of, we're going to try a slightly different approach where, so you might have noticed in the toilets in Civic Hall, we have labels talking about the kind of amount of carbon that's saved, because this building itself is heated by district heating, but actually how we replicate that across things like the playhouse, or, you know, the town hall, or other visitor attractions. So trying to work with some of our customers to see whether we can build in more kind of visible messaging in some of those sites that are heated by district heating and the benefits of that. So the questions or the help that we'd like is, you know, views and thoughts about how we best incorporate climate into our visitor attractions, and is that something that you think will add value or be a kind of an alternative way of working with the public? And any suggestions for other new ways to engage with the city on climate change? And I suppose my only caveat to that is, face, doing intense face-to-face is really difficult for us with resource levels, we did that back in 2019, and it took fundamentally the whole team. And it, I think in the current climate, that isn't viable, but other alternative ways, where we build on other networks or things like that, anything anyone can suggest? And also just, I suppose, reflections on some of the things I've fed back there on green jobs or opportunities for future green jobs, or how we...
Thank you Paula, that was really helpful. Add anything?
Well, I will add a couple of things if that's all right. Absolutely clear that the council in its own work is making really good progress, and I hope you can pick up that through both the reports, but also the fact that we've got our CDP A-grade rating, which is something that isn't given lightly. So I just wanted to say a huge congratulation to Polly's team, but everybody who's working across the council to make that happen, because there is an enormous amount of work going on. And then just to emphasise a couple of the things that Polly's mentioned, the partnership work is really important. Clearly, we've got a huge ask as a city, and that's not going to happen with the council working on its own, and the partners that Polly showed you on the slide are also working really hard, as are the anchor institutions and lots of big businesses across the city. So there is a lot of progress being made by other organisations. And then just to finish, by kind of going back to Polly's questions and asks of you, this is clearly everybody's concern, climate change is affecting all of us and will affect all of us to a greater extent in the future. And so it would be good if in your work that you're doing on a daily basis, you can think of how you can help progress that as an agenda item, as an information piece, or as concrete examples on the ground. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Councillor McClosky.
I did note the statistics in terms of Leeds being 20% more rain than average, and I noticed north-west and west Leeds, my part patch, had 11 months of... I noticed north-west and west Leeds, my part patch, had 11 months of excess average rainfall. This directly affects services in that patch and particularly things like parks, cutting grass. Are we getting the message across to our residents that environmental change is happening and it is impacting the way we deliver services?
I think, I mean, you only have to look at what happened yesterday with the level of rain and if you look, I'm kind of, I do, I look at the sort of Facebook pages and I kind of watch and observe how residents react to that. And I don't think there is necessarily a recognition that we are experiencing abnormal weather conditions and that's the reason why, you know, you're getting this excess flooding and surface water flooding and things. I don't, I don't think that's there across the piece at the moment, so I think there probably is still further work to do on that. And I think there's still that tendency to look for another reason for why that's happening. So yeah, I think there's still work to do, if I'm honest, in terms of making that link.
Commissioner Hague.
Thank you. Council's complex organisation has many different aspects to its work, but if we're looking at something like our planning policies, for example, and you talked about greening our housing and solar panels and ground source heat pumps, is there more that we could do there? I mean, it is complex because obviously there's legal constraints, but is there more in those kind of decisions that we could be doing? Is there more we could do to use section 104 agreements? And so where would you, in an ideal world, where would you like to see that going?
So I think the work the planning team has done on the update to the local plan is great. It would get us to where we need, we need it to get through the inspectorate process. But actually, that has absolutely got net zero at the heart of it, it's got biodiversity, nature recovery, all the things that we'd want to see for a kind of better city. I think the challenge is more those things that come under things like permitted development and/or, you know, for example, people being allowed to tarmac over their drive with no kind of reflection about, we can advise, we can put policies in. You know, that's really challenging in the interim, or people who've got planning permission predating that and they can hold it and carry on. All of those things are kind of obstructions to us getting to net zero. But actually, where the planning policy's got to, I think absolutely has gone in the right direction and it's pushed the boundary. So I'm really supportive of what colleagues have done.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thanks, Chair, thank you. I know we've touched on different partners working with Leeds throughout the city. I'm also interested in terms of the number of volunteer hours that have been behind the woodland creations scheme. I just wondered if there's information on kind of the success rates of those schemes in terms of the maintenance and follow-up of the saplings that are planted and also in terms of the balance and kind of levelling up canopy cover throughout the city? Thank you.
Okay, we have stats and data on all of those, I haven't got them on hand today. So we have, so when I first came into role, we did have an issue with what had happened previously in terms of the kind of viability and survival rate. And so we went back last year, we revisited every site and have either replanted, reestablished, but made sure that rather than just keep kind of going without looking back, that everything that's been done previously is now on a firm footing. The only place is that we haven't done that is where we've had areas where they, for whatever reason, they haven't taken. And there has been sort of lessons learnt where, you know, even things like when we plant, we've pulled back. So we might, previously it's been recognised the UK planting season was up to March. The reality is really you want to be stopping more, I think, around the end of February because of the way the climate's changing. So things like that are starting to be built more into the learning. But, and there are, we have got stats in terms of volunteer hours and canopy covers, I'm more than happy to come back with all of those outside the meeting.
You want to come back?
Thank you. And I suppose I just, I think to maybe include that kind of general engagement, it would be nice to see like real celebration of that volunteer input into the scheme as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
A number of questions. I mean, we have met and we have debated this on a number of occasions, Polly, so I don't think any of it will be new to you. So if you take page 35, the very last paragraph, where you talk about Leeds' contribution to climate change has decreased by 38%, and we, the council itself, have reduced by 63%, which is to be welcomed. But what impact, because, and if you also take into consideration our CDP A-grade, right? So in other words, we are performing better than most other authorities. At what point do you not think we should start pointing out what we've contributed to the overall British reduction or UK reduction? Because we currently produce, I think it's around about 1%. Have we now managed to get it? What is that decrease actually now showing in this country? Because if we've done it and other organisations are doing it, what are we doing now? Are we actually still producing just 1% as a nation or are we actually, although we've improved, but relative to other countries, we've actually gone backwards as a country? Which is it? So that we can get an idea. Because more precisely, on page 37, your diagram there and your narrative that goes along with it in paragraph 10 says, although there's been a slight increase in emissions over the year, and you give good reasons why, not disputing the reasons why, but you're still on track. By looking at that diagram, it would suggest that you're not on track. So in other words, if you looked at the, it cuts through, it cuts through it and it's still, you would expect it to be, the actual number would be beneath that. So we're, because what we've probably done at the moment is we've picked the low-hanging fruit, the ones that have been easy to get. You know, these are, we're now going into the area where it's going to be more difficult to actually get changes because we need fundamental behavioural change, fundamental investment in various things. So do we need to change the trajectory of that, which is a linear going down in relative terms? Do we need to start maybe bringing it down and then smoothing it out? Or do you think we can still continue with the big cuts? Because where I'm coming from in all of this is that one way I need to sell it more to people is what are the financial benefits they're getting from it? Because their electricity prices are not going down, heating costs are not going down. We're always being told about the subsidies that we're having to pay in our costs. When you compare it with American energy, for example, we've got a lot of subsidies going into our energy costs. So it's costing us more than it need do. So you installed a lot of money, you put a lot of money into my award, you gave a lot of into the council housing. What are the financial benefits that have actually arisen to these residents as a result of the investment you made? Well, not you personally, I mean, you were behind it, you were the brains behind it. So what, what, how have my residents financially improved as a result of that investment? So that's one thing. And then secondly, from the council's perspective, the council does have a budget problem and as a result of the work that you've done, how much have you contributed to trying to reduce some of that deficit? Because of the measures that you've introduced, the council's costs have gone down by X amount, Y amount, which means that it's not as bad. You know, there's 104 million, I think roughly, of budget problems. So by your contribution, would it have been 110? But you've reduced it down by 6 million because of the investments that you've, that you've made. Because I think we could sell it to the public by saying, look, the pain that you've accepted and that you've had to undergo has been worthwhile because, one, the council are better off as a result of the work that you've done and, two, as individuals, you are actually better off now than you were beforehand. And if we could sell it on that way, people might buy into it more.
Polly, did you follow that?
I'll do my best. So I think, let's pick some of the slightly easy ones. So Haldale's, I think, is the one you were referring to in terms of the council housing in your area. From memory, that was one of the schemes where I think we got as close to net zero. So I think it was solar, air source heat pumps, double glaze. It was like a real whole house retrofit. I have, within my email somewhere, I have got the figure, so I might manage to find it later, but it will have been substantial in terms of the fuel savings. I mean, even when we do something like external wall insulation and nothing else, you know, people can then heat their homes. So the savings, depending on what the fuel bill was in the first place, are significant. And again, I'm happy to come back with specific schemes and I have got that information in my email, just couldn't find it quite quickly enough. So in terms of, I suppose, how much it's contributed, we on average as a team have brought in about 35 million pounds worth of grant a year into the council from different sources, so be that district heating, the retrofit, electric vehicle charging and obviously things like biodiversity net gain going forward. And all of those help, I suppose, whether they directly reduce the cost to the council, but what they do do is make sure that we can still continue to be an ambitious place and city rather than standing still. So all of that contributes. If you look at things like the kilowatt hours of gas, they've gone down by 50 million in 50 million, no, I'm trying to work my maths, yeah, 50 million since 2018, 19. And electricity has gone down by 30 million. So if you were to put a cost benefit to that, not all of that will be because of what we've done in terms of energy efficiency and change, some of it will be because we're reducing assets. But all of that is part of our kind of journey to net zero and they are direct financial benefits. So I'm sure I've missed, missed a few of your questions. Some of it, I haven't got the dates to, but I think that's a bit of a flavour.
All right, but the one that I would like some further information on is, right, we've introduced Leeds Pipes, which has been a fantastic success, one of the best things the council has ever done. Right? So how much, what's the, what is the unit rate that households that are benefiting from Leeds Pipe paying as opposed to what the market, the average market price for the same product is? So in other words, if it was, to make figures up, 10 pence per unit under Leeds Pipes and the market price is currently 15 pence per unit, we can then roughly extrapolate locally, we can say to people, well, as a result of that, you'll save 100 pound a year, again, to pick a figure out there. Is it possible to get that level of granularity or have we not quite yet got that? You're working hard behind the scenes, I'm not saying you're not trying, but are we anywhere near getting that level of granularity?
So it's not quite as straightforward as that. So every, bear in mind, we sell to commercial customers, obviously with every commercial customer, there's a business case that sits behind it. The business case doesn't just look at the unit rate, it looks at the overall financial benefits. So it will look at our capital cost versus their capital cost, it will look at the maintenance. So if you consider you connect to a district heating network, you then don't pay maintenance anymore on heating systems or heating connections, you never have to replace your boilers. So all you've got is a plate heat exchanger connecting into your building. So there's all of those kind of longer term costs. There's also the point that with district heating, you have better efficiency, so you're not losing, so you're not burning heat that then doesn't turn into heat. So there's all those different factors that come into it. But we have got, I've got hundreds of financial models and calculations, so be happy to share kind of one of the residential ones on a commercially confidential basis.
I do believe the district heating had a specific report to it very recently, didn't it? Went to Exet Board and from my memory, I think they were able to demonstrate that the price of the heating for the consumer was something like at least 10% cheaper than if they'd had normal gas central heating, if that's the kind of figure you were after. But I can refer you to that report because it should have it in it.
I read it, there was a big thing on it from Polly's team, which is a fantastic report. But the level of granularity is not there, that you can sell it, you cannot sell it to your residents, as why we should be, for example, one of the things they're going to try and do is sign up with a glass company to get more heating energy brought in, to give us even more into the process. So we should then be looking at, how can we spread it out further into the city to some of the other parts? You know, why just because you live in Ward X and you're five miles away from it? You know, we should be looking at how can we try and get something local that would provide the energy to enable Leeds Pipe Mark 10 or whatever it is.
Yes, I think that's something that we should be investigating anyway, because I know for in my area, for instance, there's technology where you can get old mine workings and get the warm water which is down below back up to the surface and we'd love to be involved in that. And then of course, there's the Infineum incinerator, which is in south Leeds on some of our council's patches here, which is able to potentially deliver that kind of network as well, although it's a very slow grower because it involves some very significant infrastructure being placed under the ground on our streets. Commissioner Ray.
Yeah, I'm going to pick up on Commissioner Anderson's point, but hopefully a bit more succinctly. Like, this is about bread and butter issues for residents and actually a lot of what we're talking about is very cerebral. It's fantastic work, it's brilliant, it'll have a massive impact over decades towards the wellbeing of the residents in this city, many of whom are right now struggling to pay their bills, struggling with inflation, struggling with a whole variety of issues. So this stuff is brilliant, but they're going to us as elected members, they're going to frontline council officers. I can't have this, but you're spending money on this. And I think what Barry's trying to get to is what is the sales pitch in normal language which says, this 30 million pounds we've put in is actually, reduce your council bill if we hadn't done it by 10 pounds per year on your council bill. And it comes to a question I've asked several times, when we're producing this information, and this is across the council, this is not just not here, what amount of basically marketing is actually, expertise is brought in to actually understand how you sell the message, not just what the message is? Because it's very much, we have an issue with some of our academics who have got amazing stats and data and actually straight over the head of absolutely everyone, because we've got 30 seconds on a door or you've got six seconds on social media. And the public is bought into the climate change agenda, all the stats say that, but for a lot of them, they don't understand what it's delivering for them because we're not putting it into bread and butter issues. So why aren't we doing that yet and what can we do to get to that place? Because you've asked councillors here today, what can we do to help spread the message? Well, the request back is going to us, give us something that we can actually do in bite-sized chunks, not large speeches unfortunately, Barry, but bite-sized chunks, though by the sounds of it, Barry's up for some significant incinerator or something in his world. So, but how can we actually sell these in quick snippets? Because a lot of what you've said will go over probably a lot of elected members' heads and not let alone the public's heads.
Okay, I suppose we do do what you're asking to a certain extent, but we do it around schemes. So if you think about the Home Upgrade Grant, that was where we had funding that was specifically aimed at certain residents living in a certain type of accommodation without gas central heating on certain income levels. And so with that, we targeted, we got the data around where people lived and we did ask ward members to help us support, publicise that. I don't think we do it generally around the climate message. We, yeah, but I think it is quite difficult to do that, which is part of the challenge that we've found people are more receptive when you've kind of deliver the co-benefits or you, because otherwise people will come and say, well, I really want to retrofit my house, but actually I can't afford to do it. So where we've tried to do it is where we've got options or we can point people to three or four different grant funding schemes or the Green Doctor or whatever it is, or the same with the tree planting where there's an opportunity for people to get involved. That's where we've tried to focus our comms and engagement and part of it is resourced as well. We kind of have to focus where we've got things that we need to deliver. But I'd say that's, that's how we've done it today.
Which I do appreciate to a certain extent and, and it's easy when you're doing a transactional relationship, as it were. So when you're doing so into someone's house while you're proposing, it's great, they get it because they've put into it. For a large amount of our residents who are not accessing those schemes, I've seen the council spend significant time and effort, probably more. I've seen the council spend significant time and effort, probably more, we should do more than we possibly can do at the moment and we'd like to do more. The significant time and effort, and they're challenging back going, well, this is not happening on my housing. And I know, obviously, we know the council's budgets are complicated. We know there are rules around this and that. The general public don't. And it's about that retail offer so that it's not just being discussed in circles like this or interest groups. But the people that say, yeah, do you know what? That's not benefiting me directly, but I get it's doing something for the city or it's doing something for my friends. So, all I'm trying to challenge you on is what you're doing is the retail message. Because actually, as politicians know, you can do lots of work, but if you don't tell the story, no one believes that you're doing any work. And my challenge to you is, I think you're doing amazing work, brilliant, technical, sophisticated things that will deliver for the city. I don't think you're telling the story of that. And that's problematic to politicians of all political flavours because they will challenge us on that and say, well, what's it delivering for me?
councillor Dai.
Yeah, I just wanted to come in on that telling the story thing. I mean, you're right in that we need to bring people along with us. And if we're going to do that, then we have to be able to do that job. It's difficult, given the resources that the council has available to do that job. So, Polly's outlined some of the things that we do do. But one of the things that we can provide are some facts and figures that are easily digestible. And that's something that we've done in the council's climate newsletter. But also using yourselves to go and spread it, you know, spread the message of the things that are happening. And one of the things that we've managed to do in Seacroft is sell the co-benefits. So, by doing this, this is what you get. You know, if you have cleaner air to breathe or if you have a warmer house to live in or if your bills are low, if you can feed your family for less. I think that's one way of getting the climate message across in ways that people understand benefit them. But it would be brilliant if the council had resources for a huge advertising campaign so that we could cover every billboard and all the media channels with, this is what we're doing, isn't it brilliant? Because I speak all over the city and I get the same reaction as Polly mentioned. That people say, these are really great things, but we don't know about what you're doing. So, any help that you can all give in that would be really well received in terms of meetings you're having or residents' communications.
councillor Farley.
Thank you, Chair. And I am actually going to be much more succinct than councillor Ray. I'd first like to welcome councillor Anderson's proposals for a new incinerator in Addal. It'll be the first one not in Bermondoff or Richmond Hill for Leeds. So, but yeah, I mean, the, you know, the district heating scheme has made a huge difference alongside all of the other efforts to reduce people's bills through insulation, through works on council properties, looking at, how we could upgrade our tower blocks, especially in BRH, which is obviously one of the wards which is a chief beneficiary of this programme. To put into practical terms councillor Ray's comments and, I believe, councillor Anderson's comments, I think it would be quite helpful if we could have produced some case studies that succinctly bring together and pull together examples of where people have benefited or, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, Mrs Miggins has saved ninety three pounds in the month of... It's got to be, you know, a bit of a catch up, but just something sort of like, as an explainer that can be easily and generally understood by somebody such as myself, who's not massively up on the subject, but, you know, obviously has an interest. And I think that kind of case study then perhaps even sort of deployed as graphics or as social media, you know, would be really helpful. And that comes back to the point that councillor Ray was making with regards to telling a story. And back to the point councillor Anderson made with regards to being able to go back to the public and say, look, yeah, the council spent X amount of money or we've gained this financing and here's how it is benefiting people. So, I will say that is probably a little bit quicker than both of my previous commenters.
Are you wanting a response to that or is it a suggestion?
Is that doable?
Yeah, I think that is doable and we'll look for that. And I suppose, especially if we get the commitment from members, that they will then help us amplify that. So, I suppose what I don't want to do is do it, we do it on our climate account and preach to the converted. So, if others can then share that, that would be really helpful and we'd welcome it. It was a sort of suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah. If you can make that and then share it with members and then deploy it via Leeds Council's social media accounts and any other sort of interested parties, you know, that is at least one way of sort of spreading the message. But even if it is just being read by, you know, this group, we can at least then have an understanding of what's happening so that when we are challenged, we can say, well, actually, you know, somebody living in a, you know, an E-grade property that gets upgraded, you know, will save X and, you know, the benefits of it will be Y. And it's just, again, it comes back to councillor Ray's point about telling the story. But this, I suppose, will be a practical, a practical thing that could happen so that we are then forearmed. Thank you.
councillor Hannan.
I think my question has been asked, I was going to ask about the data on page fifteen, you know, the thirty nine percent, how are we actually shouting about it, you know, across the city? I think my colleagues have sort of touched on it. I think you sort of responded with a response on that. I think we have a duty of care also to shout about that. But it'd be really good to see how, with the existing capacity that you have, that you can shout about these figures. They are very, very encouraging, Polly. I'm really, really impressed with the achievements there.
Very good. councillor Hague.
Thank you. And picking up on those points, I was listening to Radio Leeds this morning, as I often do, because I like to get involved in what is currently the mistletoe crime competition. But Reema Ahmed was interviewing someone from our MRF, our glass, and talking about the glass recycling. And it was a really, really good and powerful interview. And the reaction was, you know, I didn't know this was what was happening to the glass that we recycle. I think people know broadly that recycling glass is a good thing. But so, I suppose the question is, how do we get our partners in this? The people who are helping us by benefiting from district heating, by recycling our glass, also spreading that word? Because I do think that, you know, the council saying it and councillor saying it, that's one kind of message. But when you've got it out there in the media like that, it really does come across to people, you know, that actually, how to flatten your plastic bottles and put them in so you've got more space in your recycling bin, you know, breaking down cardboard boxes, but also glass recycling back on the shelves in a month as a bottle. You know, all those things, they really are positive. And having our part, how do we get our partners to talk more about it? How do we get the media interested?
So, recently Vital Energy, who's our district heating partner, has managed to get us involved with Sky, who are doing a series of green technology documentaries. So, Leeds Pipes will be featuring on that. So, which I think is really positive. And we have done sort of radio interviews and things like that in the past at different points. But it is, I think the key thing for us is the resource. Our comms team consists of one person who's relatively new in the team, who focuses on the sort of climate agenda. And obviously, so we do, we lean very heavily on people like Vital because obviously they are our strategic partner for that in terms of their comms team and design work and things like that. So, as much as we can, we try and use others' resources to get us to where we need to be. But that is a limiting factor for us. But that's great that was on this morning.
councillor Dai.
Yeah, just to quickly add that I also listened to that. And great praise to councillor Tudor, who managed to get in a line about the carbon savings by all the glass that's now going in green bins instead of black. And my experience is that our partners are really keen to share that message because it benefits them and their own agenda as well. But I think it kind of feeds into the wider comms piece of getting that out there, that, you know, if you looked at their websites, it will be there. But people aren't going to go trawling through that to find the information, are they? So, it just needs to be packaged into the bigger comms piece.
Thank you. Can I just go back to the issue of jobs that you were mentioning? Because you made a very good example there about how much forestry has been delivered to compensate for and collect the carbon in that is out there at the moment. And how there should, there's an estimation, I think you said that there was, should be forty thousand extra jobs as a result of it. Did you say over twenty years? It was something like that, wasn't it?
I don't think I said a timescale. I'll have to go back and look at the quote. Over tens of years, maybe.
So, it's for the forestry which is planned. And of course, immediately, it doesn't need much maintenance because it's very small. But when it gets bigger, it tends to have issues, doesn't it? So, my calculation was normally Leeds accounts for about one point, is it one point five percent or one point two percent of the local authority footprint in the UK? Or at least in England and Wales, whichever it is. So, the implication would be there that we'd have at least four hundred extra people employed within our boricultural work in the city, given that, because we've also got quite a large land surface area, haven't we, as a local authority? And we're very green because we might be considered to be very urban because we're a big city. But we've also got huge amounts of green lungs around the city. So, there's plenty, what's the word? Potential for that work to happen. So, you mentioned that at the moment, there aren't many places that train people up like that. And the other green jobs which were mentioned and the expectation how they will be the jobs of the future. So, the people who are currently in school would be expected to go into these jobs eventually and they will have career prospects. But those, they're not there now at the moment. So, someone can't turn up at their school and give a skills talk in these areas. What do you think should happen to make us more prepared for these new green jobs going forward? And I note that the combined authority, devolved institutions have been asked by the government to bring forward their growth plans because the government wants to achieve significant economic growth because through that you get better public services and the like. How are we feeding into the West Yorkshire Plan in terms of the people? Because they're going to be the people that deliver the skills and they talk to the colleges and institutions that do it. How are we talking to them about what we need in Leeds? And is it that much different to what's needed in Calderdale or Kirklees or whatever? Do you talk to your colleagues and other authorities about the pinch points in the system that you identify?
So, in terms of that direct conversation with West Yorkshire, that's done through the employment and skills team rather than directly through me. So, we link with our employment and skills team about challenges. And then it would be the employment and skills team that are kind of that direct link. Because obviously, it's not just about this area, it would be across the board. I know we've just done a bit of work looking at kind of forestry across the area. And I think it's probably fair to say it's not a problem that's unique to us. It's a nation, national problem, which is why the government is starting to recognise and starting to sort of try and work out what needs to happen. And I think it's just for us to keep having those conversations, linking in with people like the Forestry Commission, linking in with DEFRA and explaining the challenges. So, I think it's part of our kind of lobbying or engagement with central government, really, about the support that we need. But it is challenging until there's the demand, colleges can't afford to run courses. I suspect the places they run just have that bigger demand at the place. So, I think it was Home First, Preston. And it just needs to step up another level before some of our more local colleges start to reintroduce it. We have conversations about, you know, Temple Newsome, Leeds College, it's based there and doing kind of its animal keeping and horticulture and the courses actually run from there. So, we have those relationships and are able to have those conversations. But we're just, we're just not quite there yet. And I think a lot of that does need to happen at a national level and we can feed into it.
There is an immediate issue though, isn't there? And we've mentioned retrofitting homes and how that's one of the tangible benefits of people to understand how climate change actually affects them and could give them a better life. Because there's been stuff in the press recently, hasn't there, about very badly applied insulation by firms which aren't perhaps, don't have the best trained staff to deliver it and it's made people's homes damp. And then there's a scheme in here which, on page forty, which talks about how you'd hoped to achieve something like, was it like four hundred homes? And actually, you'd only managed to do two hundred and eighty seven. And was that to do with the limited supply of trained people to do the job? Or was it to do with construction inflation? How do you feed back? So, you just mentioned other parts of the council are actually in charge of the specific area which would make the difference to achieve better for climate change. But it might not be their first priority. Do you see what I mean? How do you make it important for them to do stuff at pace, to make the stuff that you're doing more achievable and achieve more in terms of things like insulation?
So, just picking up on the first one around quality of insulation. So, government, on the back of some of the issues that have happened nationally, government's brought in some really strict legislation called PAS 2035 that governs how retrofit has to be done. It governs the inspection process before, the sign off process afterwards. And I think the example that's been in the press recently was a kind of historic insulation scheme. I don't think it's been done in the last couple of years. But it's at the point the residents come to tell it, that it's come to light. So, that has been recognised as an issue. PAS 2035 has lots of benefits in terms of protecting consumers. It also has some downsides, which we continue to work with government on to try and come to some conclusions on. But the Home Upgrade Grant, which is the one, I think, that you're referring to where it's under-delivered, there was kind of a multitude of issues around it. And I think actually, positively, I can say that government has learnt from these. So, the schemes that are coming out in the new year have already addressed the issues that I'm about to flag. But the properties that we had to target were so specific. Trying to find the right individuals that ticked every single box was really challenging. So, the lead in time to do that was really difficult. And then the process around it, the individual government department had to sign off every single solitary house. And so, the process around every house was so onerous. And then the availability of the data that we needed took a long while to come through. So, there were just so many barriers and it's, that isn't a problem that's specific to us. That's been a national problem with that scheme. There has been a meeting quite recently with the government department that set that up to feed that back and to have a discussion about actually how do we change that? How do we make sure schemes are more effective going forward? And what we're starting to see is allocation of funding. So, rather than bidding and competing, getting funding allocated. And what they're doing is they're looking back at delivery track records to make sure that the numbers they're giving are something that you've evidenced that you can deliver. And obviously, if you can meet that, then there's opportunities to get more funding. So, all of that feels really, really positive to me, like we're moving to where, what we've been asking for for a long, long while, rather than keep competing across other local authorities and everything being too specific. So, there are some positive changes afoot.
Okay, that's a positive thing to end on. Do we have any further questions from the panel, from the board? Okay, thanks very much. Thank you for your time today, Polly, and best of luck with all of the multitudinous schemes that you're helping to drive to make our environment better. And thank you councillor Dai. So, on to the next item of business, it's nine, which is our future programme, is it not? Are we happy with the future programme as is published? Ah, thank you very much. And the next item is item ten. Which is the date and time of the next meeting. Shall we note that the next meeting is twenty thirty January, although there will be a working party... is twenty thirty January, although there will be a working party, as discussed earlier, around homelessness in that month as well, which will be released to you later on.
And Budget Working Group next Thursday.
Oh yes, the Budget Working Group next Thursday. Look forward to seeing you all there. Thanks very much for your attention today.